Here.
Karen Thorison?
Here.
Karen King?
Here.
Paul Smith?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. The agenda has been prepared and disseminated in accordance with Board Policy 0166. I'll entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those indicate by saying aye.
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 We just have to have a consensus, I think. Well, we approved the agenda. All right, presentations tonight. We have several of them on our agenda tonight. The first one is student staff and community recognitions, but I don't believe there are any tonight. So we'll cross that off. The next item on the agenda is Item B, Security Camera Demo. Mr. Miller.
I'm gonna turn the lights off for a second.
Sure.
Earlier, I've been asked to just give a little update about the security camera system upgrade that we've been in process since this summer. And so I've pulled up here is just a real quick look of what you see on our dashboard to control it. And if I start over on the left corner here, we'll see... These menus going down at the bottom, a little hard to read from back here, but basically there are folders for each building that represent the camera systems in each building. So just starting at the top real quick here, I'm looking at the high school. And if I click that open, I get the screen up here. So these are cameras that would be in the commons area, things like that. Example here is... Here's one of the cameras for commons. Not a lot of people in there right now, but we have the ability to, when somebody's in here, look at what's going on there also. Ability to zoom in on specific areas of the cameras, like if we had kids sitting back here or something like that going on, you can zoom in on different areas of the screen of any particular camera. Going back here real quick, I'm just gonna click on our weight room. Now, you can see right here, this room currently has all the lights off in it. So in the fitness center, there's infrared capabilities. So when things are going on, even if it's pitch black, we have the ability to see who's in there walking through that kind of thing. Same kind of deal where you can zoom in on the areas. Real quick here. Another example of, here's, you know, gym cameras, something we never had before. We only have one camera in the gym, but we'll be adding three more so that you'll have complete coverage of all different angles of the gym. But again, as an example here, we could start recording things, or if I needed to, I can zoom in on a particular area of a court or something like that going on. We have the same exact system going in the other buildings. So if I jumped out of the elementary school here, or I'm sorry, I'll go into middle school first. I'm now looking at cameras in the middle school. Again, these cameras have all been put in and replaced, but there are roughly another 12 cameras going in the middle school, so we'll have additional coverage in different areas. So again, here we are, you know, looking at the Antholz Gym in the middle school. And... Elementary school here. Real quick, you know, this is the exterior views. Real quick as an example, here's one camera. This is our 4K resolution camera that we now have capable. So again, if I were to zoom in here, I can look at, you know, exactly what type of vehicle people are driving, even maybe read the license plate on it. And that, but it gives us the ability where before we had pixelated pictures of a white van driving through, we now know that's a Chrysler minivan or something like that, that's, you know, you get... And demos. And then last thing, I'll just show you here quick, our elementary school, but it'll be in other buildings too, is we have what are called fisheye cameras that we're putting in place. So like here, they have the intersection of corridors where there's four hallways. We have the ability to actually look down these two hallways going to the north and south, along with seeing what's also happening right in the intersection with one camera is now taking the place of two. And when we're done, there'll be other cameras looking back down, so you have multiple views. And again, it's the idea that the resolution is much better, the ability to zoom in, things like that. The only thing I guess I'll add here, unless there are specific questions, I'm gonna turn the lights back on, but that's just a real quick overview of the camera system. We're about halfway done with the number of cameras we have in place. Anywhere where we had existing cameras, or currently still have them, we've added new ones. By the time school ends or the summer comes, I fully expect that we'll be completely done with all 4K resolution cameras in all areas of the building, along with a lot of additional ones. A good example, the elementary school here is, just looking at the west side of the school, we have six, five cameras in place where we only had six cameras in the entire building last year. So we already are up to, I believe, 16 cameras in the elementary school as an example, so... And again, we record the video for between a week and a half to two weeks. And we can go back and pull that video back up, put it into files that can be passed on for people to deal with, whether it be administrators or something larger, depending what's going on. So if you have specific questions, I guess I'd be happy to answer them right now if there's anything else you'd like to see in more detail.
Hugh, is there any reason for a audio?
We don't, we don't have audio. And that also gets into a rather, you know, people's right to privacy and that, in terms of free speech, things like that. So that's an area that will probably be coming at some point in certain areas, but we don't have it. And I'm not aware of very many schools or facilities that have are recording audio, you know, as part of their surveillance system. It's more to record who was where doing what, not necessarily what was being said.
Okay.
So...
Hugh, would you clarify, I think you said something about two weeks? You, do you capture that and save that, or?
No. I mean, it will, at the end of two weeks, override itself. So it gives us the ability that if something comes up, say, okay, you know, last Thursday, something happened, we need to go back and look. But if it's much further than that, the only way to increase that record time is to add more storage space, and that is an additional cost. So we tried to balance time versus cost here when, you know, planning the system.
Thank you for that clarification.
Hugh, when it's done, will 100%, of the common areas be covered in all the schools?
Yeah. Well, I mean, as you can see here, and this is a good example, we've got a lot of blank spaces on that screen. Those are where additional cameras can be added. So currently, we're trying to get, you know, maximum coverage. As we go back and look at things, we might tweak where cameras are pointed. We may add additional cameras if we find a blind spot. We've already been way too aware of some things with good suggestions of just some things we're gonna wanna change and be aware of in terms of how and where the cameras are used in certain areas where we've never had them before in the buildings. So we'll dial it in more as we go. We're also going to, in terms of our admin team, the people who'll be using us within the school, dial things in a little more to make it, you know, more user-friendly. And same thing for law enforcement. Good example, I'll just end up with here real quick, is back in the high school here. This is our media center. So our person, our media center aide that works in that building, went to work the details out, we will probably give that person access to these four cameras, 'cause we have students that meet in these small meeting rooms, you know, to take classes, do work during the day. So that person has the ability to supervise those students in that area of that building at that time, but not be able to just look at the entire camera system. Same thing in terms of different buildings, different areas, depending on what people's role in that. And that's something the admin team, and I'll work out in more detail. But we will make certain people have availability to access cameras for, you know, supervision versus investigative or whatever, depending on what the role or the situation is. And then the whole idea is making this so it's a usable tool in event of a security or crisis situation in the school district. There no more questions? What, sorry, any more questions?
Any questions? I can't see your hands. Oh, all right.
I'll flip the lights back on then.
All right, thank you.
Do you, do you feel that our policies are up to date for the camera system?
They're reasonably up to date. We may dial them in a little more, some of that. We're gonna be the admin team working through the Neola and that to make sure it's up to date. And this is something too, where the policies and legislation are still racing to keep up with the technology, what you can do with these systems nowadays. But in terms of safety and that, it's a big deal you can't ignore, so...
My, my, my thought would be, who are we willing to share this information with?
Well, something where, right now, there are policies in place that basically dictates if that comes through a request to, I'll let Dr. Aslan jump in here if he wants to, but he would ultimately make the decision whether things are just shared with law enforcement or parents of an incident, you know, that kind of thing. There's language in there that details, you know, it's rather restricted in terms of who we do it and how. So it's not just available to anybody and everybody. You have to have a legitimate reason or a concern, and you work through a process to get that video.
I do have one more question, Hugh, with the, the commons area in the high school. Is there an area that is not really covered as well as perhaps the larger part of it?
There are areas right now that are not totally covered, but there are also areas where we're planning to add more cameras out there as we go. We've tried to hit the areas that are the highly-used spots. And at the end of the day, just the way the building, you know, there's always that potential for a blind spot in a corner or whatever you might not totally catch. But that's where those fisheye cameras help, where you're looking in the main area, but you also cover some of those small areas around you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, before we get to the next item on the agenda, I skipped over the, the part about the audience and asking questions, and so I wanna make sure that I do that. It should've been read after I called the meeting. I said that this was the date and the time, et cetera. So members of the audience are welcome to ask questions and share insights on the committee of the whole agenda items as they are being considered to the school board. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your question or idea. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda items being considered. And if you didn't get an opportunity to sign in when the lights are out, if you would do that before you leave tonight, the sign-in sheet is over on the table. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the disposal of surplus property. Shannon?
Dr. Aslan and I were approached by a community member regarding the property that we've been talking about, releasing from the school district. At that time, we asked the community member to come back with a formal offer for the district, and that we would present it to the board. We currently do not have that offer. So again, this is something that we'll just roll to the next board meeting or committee of the whole. But there was also information provided on board docs of another school district, I think, deeding away land to a cemetery, which is a similar situation to what we're looking at.
So if that person doesn't come forward, perhaps we'll consider this other option?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any questions? The next item on the agenda is to consider change of part-time status for limited paraprofessional positions. Mitch?
All right, good evening. I'm here tonight to request that the board strongly consider a gradual transition from full-time to full-time paraprofessional staff. Included in your documents in the board docs, you'll find a report that I prepared and presented at our November 28th administrative team meeting, outlining our paraprofessional crisis in the district, and providing supporting evidence as well. Highlighted in that report are the following. We're having difficulties recruiting, hiring, and retaining qualified, qualified, part-time paraprofessional staff. And as a result, we're struggling to meet the needs of our students that are identified in their IEPs, individual education plans. We're seeing an increase in student behavioral and academic difficulties. We are spending inordinate amounts of time, effort, and money training paraprofessional staff, and then losing them to neighboring districts that are offering them full-time employment. And we are seeing our teaching staff take on more than is reasonable or should be expected, as many are choosing to work through their scheduled lunch periods, and also work through their prep periods in order to provide those services that our paraprofessionals have traditionally been providing when we can fill those positions. Along with my report, I provided a recommendation, outlined the budget impact of that recommendation, and identified how the additional costs could be covered during the first year of the proposal under the recommendation. And I guess at this time, I would entertain any questions that you have relative to the crisis, my recommendation, or any information that I've included in that report.
Can you share with the audience the budget impact in a nutshell?
Yes. The budget impact would be roughly $20,000 per position to go from part-time to full-time, because that would put people into a benefit situation.
And then, I did notice that in part of your report, you said that part of that budget would be recouped, or could be?
Part of it, part of it has been recouped already. I guess the first year I was here in the district, we took a look at what we were bringing in in school-based services, which is billable services from Medicaid. And we did some training with staff, we put some procedures and systems in place. Heidi Christman has been instrumental in, in holding things together for us there. And I do have some of the rough, well, they're pretty specific numbers. During the 16-17 school year, with school-based services, we brought in $25,548. After we trained staff, put some systems in place, we were able, able to go back during the 17-18 school year and recoup $23,792 from the previous school year. And in addition, during that school year, we were able to recoup $85,000. So if you look at what we brought in last year compared to what we brought in two years before, it's roughly $60,000, which could cover the cost of those three positions in that first year. Now, the request that I have, or the proposal that I've asked, was that we do three per year, so it's a gradual impact to the budget. This would be able to help absorb, and Shannon can probably speak to this better than I can, but this would absorb that first year of adding, taking three people from part-time to full-time. The other thing would be, we would want to do it gradually, because if you did it all in one swoop, not only would there be a budget impact, but there would also require you'd have to lay off part of your staff in order to hire the other people full, full-time. So the recommendation would be we would gradually do that as we get to retirement, or we have someone resign from a position, make those positions whole.
How many people are you looking to transition eventually?
I guess as long as there's need. Right now, we are looking for three for next school year, and I think we could revisit it after that, but the way that I worded it, and you can change the wording and do what you, you feel is appropriate, but would be that we look at three per year until we can deal with the crisis that we're, until we can, I guess, find some resolution to the crisis that we are. I mean, if the economy changes and there isn't as much employee, employment out there, it might be easier to find part-time people that are willing to do part-time work. But right now, we're bringing in part-time people. We're doing a lot of training and professional development in there. If you look at my report, they're moving out the door pretty quick. Just this school year, we hired four, and three of them have left. Four of them have left, all for full-time employment, and three of the four paraprofessionals in other neighboring districts full-time.
Are you looking at starting this beginning next school year, or starting this immediately, or?
Next school year, because one of the complications we would have would be, our people right now are part-time, but they're not necessarily half-day and full-day. So if we were to go to full-time right now, it doesn't match up very well on the schedule, because we have some kid, people that are covering kids for five hours, so adding the three hours doesn't really work to go part-time to full-time. So what we would do is, in the summer, we always schedule in the spring based on our kids' needs. We can take a look at the staffing, there's traditionally been turnover in the summer. And at that time, if we had positions, we could post those positions, and we could hire those at full-time to start the school year next year.
How many total part-timers do we have right now?
I don't have it with me. I can get that information for you, but I guess I didn't, I didn't add it up.
That would be a...
There's significantly more part-time than full-time.
That would be good information for us to have, if you could send that to us.
I sure can.
Broken down by, yeah, by, by time. I know some people come in at a certain time and have to leave, and then there's an overlap between someone else coming in at, at all the schools, if we could.
Sure.
All right, that'd be great. Deb, did you want something else?
I just need to, my question is, would you have, are you doing them from school year to school year, or are you just basing those employment numbers on IEPs? Or how do you?
All of, all of our needs for paraprofessional support are identified in student IEPs. So if we're gonna hire somebody, if there's a need, it has to be a need that's identified in the student's individual education plan.
For special education? For special education?
For special education, yes. And that can change anytime during the year, and that's why I've been to you sometimes asking for additional support, which we, the, the support that I asked for additionally during the school year, we've not even scratched the surface on that, partially because we can't find people, and partially because the needs are constantly changing. So if we have a student move out of the district or move into the district, our needs are always changing.
You, you gave a list of a school that uses only full-time. How does that school district handle when there is no need? Are they having to pay unemployment to this full-time employee because they no longer have the need? The question would be is, if you wanna continue to go three, 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 eventually, we're gonna get to where we're at full-time. And eventually, if you go down, as you're saying, 'cause it's so unpredictable, are we then on paying the unemployment for a year of an employee that's been here maybe two or three years, that all of a sudden, it no longer is, we don't have a need?
I believe the potential we could, Shannon, you could probably speak to that better than I can now.
So for our part-time employees, we give them notice of work assignments. And within those notice of work assignments, it very clearly states that they will be employed from the beginning of the school year to the end of the school year. So that is our term of employment for them. Therefore, that takes away the ability to collect unemployment during those summer months, because we clearly state what our terms are. Now, we also then would give them notice of work assignments for the next year if we're going to bring them back. But that, that would be with a start date of 9/1 on the next school year. I'm guessing, this is apparently my assumption, for these districts that are, have full-time employees, they might float between special education and general education as needed. The, what happens then is just who's paying for what, whether it's special education or it's the general fund that's paying for their time.
And there may be needs where we need part-time people, because the schedule doesn't always mesh.
Mitch, I think if I added it upright, I, I believe you said that in 17-18, we received $85,000 of school-based services, is that correct?
Yes, $85,826.
Okay. And then, but had re-applied for the 16-17 school year? And, and so as a total, got about, received about $48,792?
That's correct.
All right. And it, and is that, is a school-based services, is that a, is that one of those things that gets paid or gets sent to us immediately? Or is that something that sometimes it comes, sometimes it doesn't? Sometimes you have to wait a while?
It'll always come, if it's an eligible service that we're billing for, but it doesn't come immediately.
Yes. So when he's talking about, he received $23,000 for the 16-17 school year, that was received in hand in this school year, and that was part of the reason when we were talking about how we ended up for the fiscal year last year. It was slightly better than what we anticipated because of the extra money we received from SBS. We're at the mercy of them, and when they provide us with those dollars. So it, there could be a lapse in time, but we do know that we'll always get it.
Okay.
A lapse in fiscal year, to be more specific. There could be a lapse in fiscal year.
In fiscal year, all right, all right. And so, can I just ask, in generally, what types of training did you do that changed this by 30, $25,000?
Well, we did some training on what needed to be written into IEPs so that it was a billable service, so it was identified, because one of the things that's required is a copy of the IEP that shows that it's in the student's IEP. We also put together documentation logs, so our paraprofessional staff are documenting all of those things in the IEPs and signing off on them daily and weekly to demonstrate that they provided the services. And then all of that gets sent, sent to CISA, it all gets compiled, and then it's sent out to Medicaid. We also have to make sure that we have, we know which kids are Medicaid-eligible, and then we have to have parents give us consent to bill. So there were a lot of, a lot of pieces there that just needed to be put together to make sure we were being more efficient in covering. We were actually billing for all of the things that we were doing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So this is, three people would cost us an additional $60,000?
Yes.
Essentially, for next year?
Yes.
And Shannon, would we anticipate getting that 60 at some date, but we don't know when? That's the problem.
We'll, we'll likely get it next year. I mean, if there's funds left over from this year that are being paid into next year, we will likely cover the 60,000. We're, we're willing, the reason we're coming so early is because we're formulating the budget for next year, and especially the staffing part, and so this is what we're looking for. Are we gonna put in part-time people, or are we gonna put in full-time people? We're willing to cover it as a district through Fund 27, knowing that we would likely get that back. And whether we use flow-through if we have to, or if we use the SBS money, is, you know, we're willing to do that. So we're just looking for approval so that we can start finalizing the budget with the staffing piece.
I know that having a, a full-time person, having that same person in front of those students every day for that consistency is very important. And when I saw this proposal, I thought, it's about time. So thank you for putting this together, but do send us that information that, that we asked about. Any other questions or discussion?
I, I, my, my thought on it is, I, I agree. It's more consistent to have the students in them questioning, if the reimbursement is there, why only three? And because I don't know how many total we're at, but that's part of my question as far as, how many part-timers do we have? If we eliminate, if we have 16 part-timers, that would be equal to in positions. So I don't know how many part-timers we have to start with.
Well, it's not, it may not be, because some people, part-time doesn't mean a half-a-day.
Right.
Shannon, can you explain that?
Part-time can be anywhere from two and a half hours a day to up to five and three-quarters hours a day. I think that's the maximum that we go for our part-time staff. We also have full-time staff on right now, if I, Mitch, three full-time staff?
I think it's more than three. I think we have, we have two at the high school for sure. We have one at the elementary, have these two at the middle school. So off the top of my head, I can think of five.
Five, okay.
Two at the elementary, so that would be six.
Okay. So there, we, we have six full-time special education staff right now. And then we would just, we, we will always have a need for part-time staff. We're not saying that if we get these full-time staff members that we're going to eliminate all part-time positions. We'll always have a need for part-time positions, but we'd like to transition to more full-time positions. I think at any one point, we had eight in the district a couple of years ago, so... And it's always gonna fluctuate based on the need of the students coming in. But when we hire those staff, we let them know that, that their position is student need-based, and if it fluctuates, there may be the need to...
That's in the notes for every single one of the interviews we do, we let people know that they need to be flexible, because based on student needs, they might have to move from building to building, or if a student moves out of the district, or a couple of kids move out, we might not have a need either, so there'd be a potential layoff. We haven't, in the time that I've been here, laid anyone off. We've been looking for people. Any other thing to answer part of your question? If we did more than that, it wouldn't give us the ability to gradually do it. The two, the, the reason for the gradual was two things. One, the budget impact could be spread out over a number of years, and the other is, we don't wanna lay people off in order to make other people whole. So by doing it gradually, as somebody either retires or resigns, we can post a full-time position that'd make it whole.
My, my thought process on it was, I've been questioning, why not just do what we have right now as we need them, rather than, the idea of the gradual makes sense for what you're saying, but at the same time, I'm concerned that we're sending a message that future boards are gonna have to make decisions based on what we did tonight when we could've dealt with it ourselves. 'Cause you're here saying that the board, if we do three this year, then we're gonna do three next year. Well, the board, next year might not go along with that. The board might say, I'm not bound by this in any way.
But there's, yeah, it could change any time.
You guys could come back and change next month if you approved it this month, if you wanted to.
Plus, the need might change. We might come back and say, we need four next year. I mean, it would always be based on, it's always student-based, always fluctuating.
And there are some people in the district that actually wanna work part-time, is there not?
There are. And we would certainly try to work with that, because there are needs, sometimes part-time needs. I mean, we don't wanna split somebody across buildings if we don't have to, if we have people that wanna work part-time. This just gives us a lot more flexibility. I guess the thing we're really struggling with, and maybe I'm spending more time talking about budget than should be spending more time talking about kids, but there's a lot of negative impacts right now on the kids, because there is a transition all the time between parastaff, even with one student that has paracoverage all day. And that isn't many of our students, but some of them, they're working with at least two different people with part-time paraprofessional staff. And our kids that need the most support and the most consistency are the ones that sometimes are getting the least. They're working with more adults in the building than those that aren't. So I think that that's a huge part of, any other thing is really keeping quality people. If we're doing professional development, and we're setting things up, and we're sending people out and bringing people in constantly, working on our professional development days, it's really hard for me, because I see how hard everybody's working on building up these skillsets, and then neighboring districts are saying, thank you, in a sense, and they're hiring away from us when we've developed that skillset. That's hard for me.
But you think three is enough for, for the first year?
I think it's a great start, and I think it also gives people that are on staff that understanding that that's something that we're working toward, and it gives them a little bit of that comfort level in that, you know, what if I stick with this? Maybe I don't wanna leave, because there's the potential for me to be able to become full-time now, really. I'd I'd be happy with three next year, I think it's a good starting point.
And do you kind of have a plan, should this, should we accept this and pass it at our next meeting? Um approve this, do you already have a plan in mind?
In the summer, if we had positions, we would try to post them as full-time positions. We would interview both internal and external candidates because I wouldn't want to exclude, and I would want to make sure that we hired the very best person to put them in front of our kids.
Correct, okay. Great, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mitch. All right, the next item on the agenda is the school improvement plan updates for the high school and the middle school. Who would like to go first? High school? All right. I think I think the high school is listed first in our information.
So in the fall, we talked about our strategic priorities, and I had mentioned that we are going to um assess this process towards the end of the school year with a formalized survey that we do every year as a school district. But I also said that I wanted to kind of have a midterm check to see if the the things that we are doing are effective. So with that, we ran a um a survey. Um and we also did, basically, if you look at our first strategic priority, it said to reduce the number of Fs for freshmen and sophomores by a minimum of ten percent. From uh the previous school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and we measured using the information from fall first term with what we what we uh had in first term of the school year two thousand eighteen, nineteen. And you you can see from the data, we had, what I think, some pretty significant improvements. And and when we talk about Fs, now we're talking about actual course Fs, not student Fs, if you understand what I'm saying. It's it's per course, not per student. So in other words, we do have students, for example, that would have multiple Fs. Those would be calculated as a total number versus per student, which is how we chose to do that. So if you if you take a look, and of course, we we have our uh our our quarters over, our semester is over next week. So we'll be able to update this data as well. And and once again, we are hoping, uh we aren't necessarily hoping, we're expecting these these numbers to drop as well with that process. So uh and once again, we're we're on track, moving forward in a positive way. But once again, the school year's not over, and we want to make sure we're constantly looking at what we're doing to make sure it's having an effect on student performance. The second priority um was to recruit, develop, and maintain a diverse and premier workforce. And if you take a look at the the questions that that we asked, this is part of the survey that that was uh taken from last year's survey. So the questions are the same. So we ran a uh survey monkey, um and it was uh uh based on the same questions. The first one being, I'm proud of our district. In two thousand eighteen, eighty eighty-one percent of our employees, and if you look at the bottom there, we uh it was it was thirty-nine uh employees from the high school that answered the survey. And uh as you can see, eighty-one percent from two thousand eighteen, the goal was eighty-five percent. In two thousand nineteen, at this point, it was ninety-five percent said that they were proud of the school district. The second one, I enjoy being involved in district-affiliated activities outside the normal school day. Seventy-seven percent in two thousand eighteen said that they were, and and let me back up here a little bit. Um the the choices were agree or strongly agree. And on the, we'll call it the negative side, disagree or strongly disagree. So we used agreed or strongly disagreed in in our percentages. Okay, so that being said, um the the goal was eighty percent, currently, it's at eighty-five percent. So the third one, it would take a lot for me to leave this district. Um sixty-three percent said that was true and it or that was true in two thousand eighteen. Our goal was seventy percent, and currently, it's at ninety percent of those thirty-nine uh employees. I would recommend this district to others seeking employment. Seventy-five percent in two thousand eighteen, our goal was eighty percent, currently, it's ninety-five percent. You're looking at the trend, um in the current culture of the of the high school right now, I I think these numbers reflect how how our staff feels. And our goal is to continue to to do the things that we're doing to allow us to continue to keep these numbers stable, if not bring them up. But once again, at the end of the year, we'll be doing the official survey. Priority three, expand communication avenues, increase communication with stakeholders at the high school by utilizing the following strategies and meeting the two objectives. And the the questions related to this were school uh school department information is communicated communicated effectively. In two thousand eighteen, it was fifty-three percent agreed with that statement. The goal was sixty percent, currently, we're at ninety percent. Once again, I I think it's a reflection of our staff at this point. And the last one was the principal, building, administration communicates effectively. Two thousand eighteen, it was thirty-eight percent, goal was fifty percent, we're currently at a hundred percent with uh with the staff feeling that they're receiving the information they need to do their jobs effectively. Any questions?
Um how are you going to get better? You you know, I mean, I you have a small percentage there. I you I see that, and and I'm I'm kind of teasing Dennis, but you know, the um one of them was three percent. Uh you were aiming for a three percent in priority two about stabilizing the district operations and infrastructure. And your goal was a three percent change, and and it jumped up from sixty-three percent to ninety percent. So that's wonderful. And I you did say, you know, to keep it the same or improve it. And uh it's good, that's hard because the numbers are are up way up there.
And once again, you know, I I always take a look at this as well, okay, there's there's always a hunting period too. So um we're already in that realm where there's decisions that have to be made. And but once again, I think the uh the conversation is always good, and when people feel included, they they feel good about what they do. Um and as I mentioned to my dean of students, that you know, we we also have had a significant change in in referrals and in that kind of thing in the building. And you know, my comment is, we work harder now because we have made progress. Let's uh really put uh our foot on the gas pedal and see what we can do.
Uh thirty-nine responses represents what percentage of the total?
Um I think there were only five that didn't respond. If I, I'd have to check on that for sure, but it's but it's, and they're out of the the twenty-one teachers, all twenty-one responded. So we had it categorized and and based on uh the job you held in high school. Any other questions?
No, thank you for that clear and concise report.
I have, I have one more question.
Oh, Deb.
Sorry.
Sure.
Um can you tell me um what you think contributing to the the less Fs? I mean, you're, that's a significant difference between forty-five freshmen to twenty-five freshmen. Is that is that staff, or do you think it's just general demeanor in in the high school? Or or information coming out differently from staff members? Or how how are you looking at contributing to this number going down so significantly?
One of the things we talked about when we when we looked at strategies for how we were going to improve this, it had nothing to do with curriculum. These were all just cultural changes within the school. Engaging, one of the things that we did and have been doing is engaging in conversations with students on a continuous continuous basis. So we, so for example, I have seniors, and I get a new list of seniors that are that are falling behind. And you know, I I meet with them. And we have Dr. Deager and and Mrs. Myers doing the same thing at other grade levels, so we're, that's part of it. Uh one of the things I've challenged the staff to do is 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 look at different strategies. Uh we're doing that in math right now, trying to figure out, well, we we have this this group of students that isn't meeting our expectations. So are we happy with that, or are we going to try to figure out another strategy to reach them? And and the staff has responded very, very well. And you know, all of that, you know, there's there's a lot of dynamics in that process, but the big thing is communication and building strong relationships with our student body. And that's what we're seeing for for the improvement.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, Michelle.
All right, same as Dennis, we'll just update you on what the goals were and where we're at. Our first goal was advanced student achievement, and this was regarding their star reading and star math scores. Uh our star window for winter opens up on January fourteenth and ends on the twenty-fifth, so at this time, we don't have any academic data for you. Um our second goal for our stabilized district operations and infrastructure was um the percentage of staff that indicate our school or slash department operates as a team will increase by no less than five percentage points over the two thousand eighteen results. So over the two thousand eighteen results said that thirty-three percent of Spooner Middle School staff agreed or strongly agreed that we worked as a team in the spring. When we did our um check-in in the fall, uh we were already up to sixty-eight percent of Spooner Middle School staff that agreed or strongly agreed that we were operating as a team. So I think that is um a huge kudos to all of the work that our staff is doing together right now and putting themselves out there and having conversations with other team members and problem-solving together. And and so I just want to make sure that they get some recognition for all of the time that they're putting in to to that teamwork piece. And our last goal uh was to expand our communication avenues. So we had set a goal that we would communicate with families at least once every two weeks using the Remind app, that we would send one positive postcard home per semester to each student, and post on social media no less than three times per week. And from September through December, um our staff have communicated more than once every two weeks using the Remind app. So that's per grade level, and every grade level has exceeded that. Um we have sent or have ready to send a positive postcard to every student in the school. So we'll start over again in a couple of weeks and do it again. And we have posted on social media an average of seven times per week.
Okay, so the um the the second goal, Michelle, I have to tell you, that first goal, your your goal, I had to reread and reread and try to figure out. It's a math thing, I think, but I was like.
We'll get you there, Karen, don't worry.
All right, it was, and let me read it. By June two thousand nineteen, no less than eighty percent of students scoring at the twenty-fourth percentile or below in reading and or math will have a student growth percentile of at least fifty-five or higher based on their current level of performance. End, period. And uh it just, it took me a while, all right, so.
It's all good.
I I apologize for, you know, not not understanding it real well and and I just telling you that that I I did read it, and I finally broke it down into pieces, so thank you. Um I think a a a sixty-eight percent agreement over thirty-three percent is a huge jump with um only only expecting five-point difference. And a maybe question that Paul had had, how many of your staff members took that survey?
Oh, I'd have to go back and get the exact number. Um all quite a few, almost everybody, I would say. Um I know all of our certified, like our our classroom teachers, we had a hundred percent participation from them. I think we probably missed out on some custodians and uh maybe some food service workers, although it was invited for everybody to take, so.
So maybe a chat with them, I mean, just an informal, hey, you know what, we have this survey, and we'd like to get a hundred percent. Um a- and you obviously don't know who.
Right.
Did not respond because that's um all anonymous, and it is good if they do respond because then you have valid, very valid results.
Right.
Wonderful, um have have you heard from the parents about the positive postcards and and the Reminds?
Um I've heard, probably our our teachers could speak more because I think the Reminds, they get the communication right back on that. But I've had, I've had parents um come up to me and say, what a nice surprise that was. I even got a positive postcard from the elementary school, and it was so cool, you know, for my kid, and it was so cool to get it. So it was fun to see the the impact of what we're doing, you know, when you get it yourself. Um and I think we have um the newsletters that go home and the um the staff newsletters, all of those things are are just solidifying up our communication, and it's it's helping people to work better together.
Great, with that remind, is that um i- is there an opportunity for the parent to reply to that?
Mm-hmm, sometimes. Um Carrie shaking her head yes out there, so yes. So if the teacher sent home an announcement about something, um it's a way for parents to text back and ask a question or ask for a resource without a teacher having to give out their personal cellphone number to do the texting.
Certainly, okay. Great, any any other questions on Michelle? Great, thank you for a good report, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is listing, no, I'm sorry, that's, yes, listing of early graduates. Dennis.
So you should have that list, um as part of your package of information. All the students that are on the list that have been met with and are currently uh in the process of meeting the early graduation requirement. Of course, at the end of the quarter, you'll see that uh the ones that are listed in quarter two will graduate. And then we have some quarter three graduates as well. So they've all been met with, and they're all on pace to accomplish their goal and start their lives beyond high school.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is um the SHS yearbook proposal.
Do you want me to, okay. Um the yearbook advisor, Ms. Sick, has asked that the board review and accept a transition of contract from the current provider that we have for yearbook to Jostens, and she included that in her memo. Just a note, uh it's being brought to the board because it is the fact that we're entering into a contract, it doesn't touch any district funds. This all runs through an activity account. We're just looking for approval to move forward with Jostens.
And and that's just a one-year contract, correct?
Uh, correct.
Yes, okay. Did you all have a chance to look at that?
I did look at it, the the question I have is, um is this decision being made financial decision, or is there more to this? Because I didn't see the two comparing each other, I see one being recommended. So I I guess I didn't see what is, how many were considered?
But I don't, I couldn't answer that question, but to speak to the financial piece, um this is a really a, you know, we collect money in from the students, then they go ahead and pay for the yearbook. So again, it's no financial impact on the district itself. Do you know, is there a difference in cost for the yearbook?
The the cost, I'm not necessarily aware of. Mrs. Mrs. Sheek uh looked at three different, including the company she used last year, and she was really looking for how uh you know, the company that could provide the services she was looking for. And that's where she came with Jostens, she felt would be the one that that would be most pliable with all the things that she wants to do with the yearbook. And of course, we have a a relationship with Josten with the graduation items and rings and things like that as well. So she knows she's going to get, uh you, when she has an issue or whatever, someone's going to be there to address it, and that was a big thing too.
But to be clear, we're changing to Jostens from something different, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, oh, hi Dennis, is um to consider approval of new SHS courses for the two thousand nineteen twenty twenty school year.
Okay, Hugh, I need you. It's good to be needed, right? That's all?
That's all.
Go ahead, you might as well stay up here. So what what, we have two uh course proposals. Uh one is coming from Hugh in the tech department, and the second one will be from Mrs. Rudisil, and they're both here to explain their new course.
Uh this first course proposal is.
here, I've always had kids at one time or another have worked with me that were kind of the techie-type kids within the school district, and you know, they were valuable, they are valuable when they help out with things. Our goal here tonight is to offer a class and formalize things more so that we develop a group of kids that we can rely on more to help our staff and students. So, as you look at this proposal, basically it's just saying that we want to have a class that we'll offer kids and will give them basic training in a variety of different areas that involve use of technology from supporting it from a hardware aspect, software aspect, and then actual use within the classroom. Myself and Mrs. Fiesel know that this is, you know, to teach a nine-week class takes a lot of time and commitment, so we are looking at tag teaming this together so that we both are able to do our regular positions while at the same time regularly instructing a group of kids with the assistance of the other tech people that work in the office here. Part of this, I guess I'd say that we think is kind of a little unique is that in addition to just teaching kids how to, you know, fix the screen on your Chromebook or why the projector doesn't turn on, is we also want to instill in them the social skills that they need to be able to go in and work on equipment or work with people, whether it's staff or other students, so that they have those strengths. And if they do a good enough job, then we invite them back to be part of the official team that will work out of our office, dealing with day-to-day problems and issues and providing support in new areas where we want to go. The idea of, you know, doing things like running the cameras and setting things up for a meeting like this to, you know, fixing something that's broken, creating content for, you know, web page, social media, other things like that, and assisting our teachers in the classroom when they're using technology to teach students, so. The units are broken down here. I'll, I'll let Callie just speak for a second here about things that maybe I might miss or overlook.
Yeah. So, you'll see here, we outlined a basic idea of what those nine weeks might look like, kind of the bigger things that we deal with on a regular basis. So, like Hugh mentioned before, starting with hardware repair. So, all of our students in grades three up through grade 12, our students have access to Chromebooks. Obviously, we work on students taking great care of those, but things happen, so some general repair of those devices would be really helpful. Also, great skills for students to take with them when they leave here and maybe go into a career. Photo and video editing and creation, we're going to talk later in this meeting about some of our social media impact, so helping students positively learn how to use those platforms and creating some of the content for those. We have tons of events, more and more that we're trying to livestream, so some of that event support will be worked into this course as well as some website design, that educational tech support piece, so that would be more of the going into classrooms and maybe working with small groups of students, teaching them how to use maybe a new app or a new program, and just being an extra set of hands for classroom teachers. And then those last couple of weeks of really being out in our district and getting some of that hands-on experience, working with different needs of staff members and students.
So, just adding that to this real quickly, it's the idea that we want to have kids that, like I said, will maybe fix your Chromebook, but we also would like to see, we get to a point where we're setting up for those very nice concerts we do across the hall here in the auditorium, that you see a group of kids sitting in the back running the sound boards and the light boards and doing some of those types of roles that traditionally have been done by staff members because we know we have kids with the interest and the ability to do that. And this is an idea of getting those kids a whole range of experience, knowing that we're going to have kids that have strengths and weaknesses in all these areas, and together getting a team of kids that will send our best man or woman, whatever the case may be, forward to deal with this project or that problem, but having given them some basic training, and then from that, creating a cadre or group of kids that can come back as juniors and seniors and be that team that provides my people with support, our teachers with support, and our students. So, just to finish up here, we did tie it back to some of our information technology standards that we want every student to have, and came up with learning targets that kind of just say what these kids should be able to say, I'm able to do this, I'm able to do that if I work through this nine weeks and do reasonably well in terms of what I accomplish and how I learned and my demonstration of those skills. So, I guess what we're looking forward tonight is to move forward with approval to develop this course and offer it to a group of interested students for next fall is the ultimate goal.
I like the idea of having the students have the ability to create content, I think, for our social media posts there. I think that will generate a lot of interest, you know, by the community to see what the kids have generated.
Yeah. I think it would be a nice tie-in. We have, like, our student council members who do a lot of events and special things going on in those school districts, so it'd be a really nice tie-in to have another group of students be able to highlight some of those things that are going on and happening. And number one standard that we highlighted here was that digital citizenship piece, so just teaching students to responsibly use everything that's available to them and at their fingertips. Seems like we always hear about the negative, you know, more so than the positive, so turning that around and helping our students responsibly create some of that content.
Would this class be open to all students in high school?
It is open, I'm sorry, it's open to sophomores through juniors and seniors here. I guess when we met with Mr. Shears, we were all in agreement that our freshmen need to come in and, you know, start getting those requirements and some of those electives done. The idea is that as they have more electives, as they, you know, progress through, that's where this becomes an opportunity to take the class and then to come back and be that helper or student tech team member as a junior or senior in that. But we need to get started somewhere, so sophomores through seniors right now is what it seems to have.
So, if there was a junior this year turning into a senior next year, is it going to be too late for him to join the tech team?
Not necessarily. We're looking at some things here, again, we'll be developing this as the idea of sort of like a distance learning type version of this class so that we may have a student that can't work it into the block schedule, but there's time potentially built in down the road where they could do the work in addition to classes they're taking. And we'll have a little flexibility working with the high school principal and guidance council in terms of good kids that we want to get in as a junior or senior, you know, while, while they take their coursework and that. But I'm going to let Mr. Shears speak to that more than myself as far as, I don't know.
They're all good kids, and we'll, we'll look at basically what their needs are at that point, and, and certainly I'm going to rely on them as well, on their expertise and how we do that. We already have, I want to say half a dozen students registered to take that, and that's about where we want to be with it, with the sense of how many we can actually accommodate. So, so it's, at this point, there's interest, so.
Good. Thank you.
So, this would be an elective that's added to the, the course offerings.
That's correct.
It, it said in the information that, that 12 students have shown interest. Do you have a minimum or a maximum?
Well, we'd like to have enough students just by the time of the instructor there, and we probably don't want to go much over 15 in terms of just overall class size and commitments, and this is the first time we're working this through. So, like Mr. Shears said, we're right kind of where we want to be, I think, with interest.
And, and would you offer this class one time a year or four quarters a year, two quarters? I don't know a term. What would you?
Right now, it's a nine-week class, so I'd say maybe once in the fall, once in the spring, but again, we're open to working with the high school as long as we can make everybody's schedules work to accommodate it.
Yeah. That scheduling thing is a problem, you know, for, well, both your schedules and the students' schedules, certainly. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Can you take the microphone up? I was at home, and these are great, but this one, we've either got to get the people closer or something.
Good point.
They're all faded.
Yep. Okay.
Hold on. Our foot. And then when the people get out there, we've got to use that, and then it's really clear out. Live stream. There you go.
I'm, talked to Dennis about this, debated whether or not I wanted to offer this course for next year, but when I took a look at what we offer here, I realized there's a big hole. We have a culinary arts one, a culinary arts two, and within those programs, we don't hit upon anything as far as the science behind baking and pastry. And so, I thought we'd try to offer a new course and include the scientific principles behind both of those. So, the course is designed for students with a personal interest. Most often, what I try to do is, in my courses, I offer not only personal interest but as well as professional, since we really don't have a pro-star program here. So, what I did is I offered baking and pastry for students with a career interest in becoming a professional baker, pastry chef, or just for their own personal interest. It's a hands-on course. We build strong foundation in the principles and skills to prepare and create, and it lists the different types of things that we'll have in class. And so, the course includes instruction on function of ingredients, equipment costs, and career opportunities in the area of baking and pastry. I broke it down into an eight-week sections as to what we'd cover. It's pretty basic, just what is baking profession, always cover safety and sanitation simply because of safe serve and the likes. The science of baking, just what is the function of ingredients, and then, of course, we break it down into the different content areas. I did include all our standard learning targets. There's quite a few of them. I included also the career and technical education standards as well, so. Any questions?
You indicated that there's 45 people that are interested in this course?
Yes.
Okay. And, and this is, this is an elective? Is that correct?
It is an elective, yes.
Correct. And so, what course would you be eliminating to put this in?
I actually had to eliminate six of my courses this year. The enrollment was such that I had to cut six of my offerings for this year. So, what I did is I, I tried to keep an even offering for culinary arts one, culinary arts two, and then I do try to keep all my, all my content area. So, we, I include a course in, or two courses in child development and theory design, you know, interpersonal relations and relationship skills. So, I cut back on culinary arts one and culinary arts two. I do believe I just offered one bacon and pastry for next year.
One term?
One course. So, it'd be one term.
One term. Okay. So, you're going to turn people down?
Yes.
That's a nice thing. I mean, it's...
It is, it is.
It's, yes.
There's only one of me. Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Deb?
And you said that everyone who takes this course would have to meet the prerequisite of culinary arts one and two?
Correct. They have to have one and two before they can take the baking and pastries, so.
Okay.
Just simply because I think I, I'm hoping to focus more on the professional aspect of it, more on, you know, the pro-start, actually, food service, more in that area, so.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is, the last of the presentations, is the open enrollment seats for 2019. Shannon?
Yep. Per statute, we are required to bring forward the available seats for open enrollment with both general education and special, special education at the January board meeting. So, I will go through each grade level, but I'm only going to say what seats are available for each grade level. Has everyone, has everyone had a chance to read the memo?
Right. Which memo I'm going to, am I going to look at right now?
You're going to look at the open enrollment memo 1920, first one.
The first one. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mitch so that he can go through the special education, or did you just want me to go through that?
If there was any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. For 4K, we have zero seats available for open enrollment for next year. For kindergarten, we have six seats. For first grade, we have zero seats. For second grade, we have five seats. For third grade, we have 25 seats, and for fourth grade, we have 13 seats. That leaves a total of 49 seats available at the elementary school. At the middle school, in grade five, we have 13 seats. In grade six, we have 17. In grade seven, we have eight, and in grade eight, we have five. That leaves the total seats at the middle school at 43. And then at the high school, we generally set our, our seats at zero for each grade level because of the way that the course capacity is. So, at the high school, we currently have zero seats available, and we take those on a case-by-case basis when we have the open enrollments. And then for special education, based off of the calculations that Mitch put together, in early childhood, we have zero seats available. In elementary, grades K through four cross-categorical, we have zero seats available. In middle school, grades five through eight cross-categorical, we have zero seats available. In high school, grades nine through 12 cross-categorical, we have zero seats available. Is there any questions?
Any questions at all?
Is this in line with last year's numbers or?
Yeah, because you'll see that, you know, we take the, the, each grade level and just bump them up a year, and I compare them to what the actuals were on the Third Friday count, and most of them are pretty close. And then, of course, with kindergarten, I'm sorry, with 4K, we're estimating, and we're right now with the capacity that we have, max of three sections with 18 target section size. So, with three sections, that's 54 students, and we're estimating that we'll probably have 54 students with just our, our in-district students that we have. And then at the high school, we typically always leave those at zero, like I said, because of the, the course offerings. At the middle school, or, you know, you'll see in the third grade, that's kind of a small bubble class. There are 63 students in there, and we have about 22 in each of those section sizes, so you'll see that class come all the way through each time, each year, you'll see that that class will have more seats available because they're a smaller class size. But there's nothing out of the ordinary. And Mitch, I don't know if you want to speak to the special education about whether or not that's...
If there's any specific questions about that report, I'd be happy to. I mean, it's a pretty complex process going through and putting a matrix number for each of our students based on their needs, and then taking a look at what the state recommendations are for those case load sizes, and I've got all that information in that packet for you that shows you exactly what our case loads are compared to the recommendations.
All right. Any questions? All right. Yes, thank you for that report. All right. On to the discussion and action items for the personnel committee area, to consider change of part-time status for limited-term paraprofessional positions.
I'd like to jump in here real quick if I may.
Go right ahead.
So, lots of good questions and good discussions in the presentation portion of this meeting tonight about this topic, and it, it is a topic that's been before the board at least a couple of times this year in, in conversation. I think just a couple of insights that are really important to remember as we look as to whether you'll roll this forward for consideration as a board or not. The first really revolves around that SBS, that Medicaid reimbursement piece. Mr. Johnson, you asked the question about why not transition more paraprofessionals to full-time, and it really is a function of, of a budget flow. Adding $20,000 per person is, is a, is a pretty big commitment. So, we want to make sure that we're able to, to sustain that budget-wise. It's really based on student needs, so it's difficult for us in the month of January to say, here's what we believe student needs will be when school begins in September. And I, I think to get at the, the question or the concern of future boards having to live with decisions that this board would make, the, the phased-in implementation that's proposed, I think really does a lot to support continuity of budgeting in the future, because again, based on student needs, based on the financial situation of the district, we think that, that this proposal is sustainable. As we look at the SBS, the Medicaid reimbursement, I want to be really clear, so it's not that we're necessarily having more services that are reimbursable, it's the good work that Mr. Hamm and Mrs. Christman and subsequently the special education staff are doing in capturing those reimbursable services. So, it, it's the good work that's happening on this end. A challenge with, that comes with that is not on this end, and that is, we work through a third-party administrator to get those reimbursements, and I think that I could very safely describe the reimbursement in the last handful of years as erratic. It's very difficult to know when that money's going to come and what, which amounts are going to come, so it's important, while we know that that money will come at some point in the future, we don't know when. So, you know, as, as... So, you know, as Mrs. Grindell talked about, that the district would have to float some money, and we wanna make sure that we're in a position that we are, that we're not making commitments that we can't live up to fiscally. Thank you.
Thank you much. So, we've already heard the presentation, and we need to make our recommendation, and we would make that recommendation to consider it and make a motion at the next meeting, which will be on the twenty-first. And so, the suggested motion will be to approve the recommendation to transition up to three part-time paraprofessional positions to full-time each year, beginning the 2019-20 school year. And so, what we need is a consensus. Do you all agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, we will move that motion forward to the next meeting. The next item on the agenda is to reconsider, reconvene, or to consider reconvening the District Calendar Committee.
Yep, so, you know, we made the commitment as a district to produce two years' worth of calendars, and at this time, we need to reconvene so we can look at the 2012-20 school year.
All right. And by the way, the last calendar committee did a wonderful job, and so, we hope that the next group does it also. So, that recommendation would be to consider reconvening the District Calendar Committee. Again, we would vote on that at the next meeting, so is there a consensus to do that?
Yes.
Very good. All right, we'll move that one to the next board meeting. And the third one is to consider reconvening the Employee Handbook Committee.
Again, a commitment to review the employee handbook each spring and talk about some different sections of it, go over it with a cross-section of the employees, and so, we're just looking to move that forward for this spring.
Very good. Is there consensus to do that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, very good. So, those items are the ones that I would be responsible for. The next items on the agenda, items four, A through G, is to consider the RFP for Audit Services. Robert, Laura Shannon?
Oh.
I mean, Simon.
Yep, as the memo states that was provided to the board, the business office is just seeking approval to move forward with an RFP for auditing services, services for both the financial and the student membership audit. That student membership audit is sporadic. Some years, we have it, some years, we don't. If approved, the business office is looking to open the RFP process in February and bring a recommendation to the committee of the whole in March.
Do we do this on an annual basis?
We do not. In my time, we have not gone out for RFP, for audit services, and that's why I think it's necessary to do it at this time.
Well, I think, does anybody have any questions, Shannon? I personally think it's a great idea to go out for bid on things. So, we are in line with the general schools in the area. Do we need a consensus or...
Consensus.
Recommendation?
A consensus.
A consensus? Is everyone in agreement?
Yep.
That we move this to the board meeting?
Yes.
And we'll make the appropriate motion at that time?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. The next thing that was put on the section of the agenda for budget buildings and grounds, and that's why I'm sort of leading this one with this new model of the COW meetings that we have. Open enrollment seats for 2019, I think we've almost covered that?
Yes.
Is there anything else to discuss on that one?
Unless there's any questions?
I think not. Karen, do I need to, do we need a consensus on that one, too?
Yes, please.
Do we have that so that we can make the appropriate motion?
Yes.
At the next board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, everybody seems to be in agreement on that. The next item I see on the agenda is disposal of surplus property land. That's already been somewhat discussed earlier. Are there any further questions on that? And do we have a consensus to move that to the next board meeting?
If we move it forward, and that, will we have more information than we were?
I don't know, but we were told we don't have much new news to report, whether Karen wants to just put it on the next or not. Maybe we'll just move it to the next committee meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
For future information.
Yep.
Let's do that.
That's probably the most sensible thing to do. Thank you for pointing that out, because I was just sort of moving it in, kind of repeating what I said before without even thinking. Thank you. The high school yearbook proposal, any further questions on that, that we haven't discussed? Do we have a consensus to move that to the next board meeting for possible future action and appropriate motion?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Next is the discussion of hypothetical referendum next steps. We've been discussing a possible referendum in the future. At previous COW meetings and previous board meetings, just to discuss what our ideas are on that. And we've not discussed this tonight. Does anyone wanna start the discussion? Does anyone have any concerns or thoughts or questions that we can ask each other or to the administrators?
Are we gonna have someone coming in at the February COW?
Yep, February fourth. Luke Schultz from CSATEN, along with Lisa Voisin from Baird, will be here to give a presentation.
So, is...
That would be at the next COW or the next board meeting?
February fourth, the next COW meeting.
Right, so there wouldn't be a reason to put that on our board meeting, then?
Unless you had something that you wanna discuss.
For the twenty-first.
Yeah, I agree.
Is it agreed upon that we should wait and hear the discussion, I mean, the presentation by CSAT?
Yeah, 'cause I think we have enough information at this point until we get some additional information. I think there isn't much more to discuss. Are we...
Yes.
Okay, so, we're gonna bring in a professional presenter to talk about some technicalities at the next COW meeting, and that's on February fourth. For any of you out in the audience who might want to come and listen in, because at some point, the school does have financial needs that go beyond our budget constraints if we want to improve the school in any way. We can't go on forever without ever discussing a referendum, because it is the public who supports the school, and we have no real other source of revenue other than the people of our community. So, we invite all of you in the audience and watching on video to stay tuned and get The next matter is financial reports. Shannon, do you have anything?
Do you want me to walk through it?
Well, give us, how are we doing with our projected deficit for this year? What's your thought on that?
For looking at about a half-year, you know, January's approximately the half-year, we are obviously on some budget lines a little bit over, but nothing that I'm concerned about, and then on others, we're under. So, I expect the balance to be there for the end of the year. And at this point, pending any serious happenings in the spring, I think we'll be on target. Or any unknown revenue coming in, such as the SBS stuff, that would put us a little bit better than we anticipated. You know, I do foresee that could happen, but at this time, I don't know for sure.
Okay, the last time we discussed this, my recollection is, we were thinking that would be a possible hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. Is that about right?
Yep, you know, we're watching that, the board made a commitment to the CLC program to fund it for that approximate seventy-five thousand, and we're right on track with the amount of funding that the district's gonna provide. So, I don't anticipate that going over at all.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from anybody?
No.
No.
Approval of vouchers is the next item. Has anybody looked at the vouchers for this month?
I've looked at them, and I have no concerns. Looked good to me.
Okay, and just so, for the record, Kevin and myself and Nathaniel used to be, or still are, on the Finance Committee, even though we meet as a whole now for the next few months, just to test out this process. And Kevin, being on the Finance Committee, has looked at all of the vendor accounts, and you believe there's nothing there that is unusual?
Of what we have for vouchers, I don't see anything unusual.
Okay. So, having said that, do we have a consensus that we've looked at it, and we're approving it, and we're moving it to the board level at the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That concludes this part of the agenda.
Thank you. Paul?
Yes, the curriculum, we have the second reading of Policy Number Sixty-One Fifty-Two, and that is the second reading, which is in regards to the fees and charges to our students. There has been no feedback, and I'm asking for the board to consider recommending or moving it forward to the board's approval in two weeks.
Paul, can you read what the change is in that policy?
Well, there's a whole bunch of them.
I thought there was only one change.
Let me back to that here.
Let me read it. I'll read it. "In the event the above course of action does not result in the fee being collected, the board authorizes the Director of Operations to take the student and/or his or her parents to small claims court for collection. The district shall not permit or elicit the assistance of volunteers in efforts to collect unpaid student fees or expenses, including food service balances."
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So, the question is, do we have the consensus to bring this to the board in two weeks to report approval?
Yes.
Yes.
The second reading? Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I had for policy. For curriculum, we have the recommendation, as I'm looking for a recommendation, to forward the two additional new course proposals to the board in two weeks for consideration. And the first one will be the Student Tech Team, and the second one will be the Baking and Pastry Arts. So, I'm looking for some guidance. Do we have a recommendation to bring that to the board?
Consensus?
Yeah, I just had one question that I, is there gonna be a considerable addition of cost to this? I don't know. Did we ask that question in that? I was just wondering.
For which course, or both of them?
To combine them or both of them? I mean, is that something we have in the budget? Is that something we're anticipating? I just thought we should probably, I just wanted to ask that question. Sorry I didn't do that earlier.
There should be no additional costs. It's all our current staff, and they all have their budgets to work within.
Awesome.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm still back to that. Do we have any consensus? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have.
Okay. First thing I have here is a Strive update.
So, we will be soliciting applicants to be student mentors here this month, looking to run a training for those mentors at the end of January, and looking to match mentors with students here in the high school, and begin that Strive program, the actual mentor and student work, next month.
Thank you. And next thing I have here is a social media update. Q, you wanna...
I believe you had in your packet the report that we were given by Social for EDU, that is the firm we had contracted with for some guidance and assistance to get our social media up and running here over the last year. Just real briefly, if you look at the top two graphs that were in that report, we have seen a sizable increase in terms of our likes for our Facebook page and our Facebook reach from week to week has been fairly consistent and solid, right where we see ourselves in line with other districts our size in the area. We are continuing to post multiple times per week from each building with information about events going on in the school, things that are happening, along with stories that tell what's happening in our classrooms, with our students and our staff. The only recommendations that came out in terms of, from Andrew Gibble and Social for EDU, is, you know, keep up the work, build on what we've been doing. They did note that our Twitter reach is still somewhat lacking, and that is an area that we have not focused a lot on. One thing we'll be looking to do there is consolidate from individual building Twitter accounts to just one district one, like we have for a Facebook page that we, as a district, will post to for people to follow. And I would expect you'd start to see that go up like what we've seen with Facebook and Instagram and other reaches of that. So, the only other thing I'll add is, you'll see there was one big spike, and that was with the project that Mrs. Fiesel coordinated with the whole rest of the Heart of the North over the Green Day for the Baron Girl, and I cannot think of her name, I'm sorry. But that was a huge, widely viewed post, you know, across the whole Heart of the North State of Wisconsin, and we are continuing to focus on trying to find those kind of viral stories to tell within our own district to help promote what we're doing here as we continue to move forward. So, I don't know if there are any specific questions or anything regarding that, but plan is to keep moving forward, doing what we're doing, and just try to refine a little more in certain areas.
And what is it that you said about Twitter, that it would come from one source?
Yeah, we just have one district Twitter account, SASD at Twitter, and, you know, stuff will come from each of the buildings to that particular account instead of having three individual building accounts and that.
So, one account and four or five people able to...
Be the same group of people, mainly our lead staff in each office that are doing that posting. As far as collecting the information, they'd be the same ones putting to Twitter, along with members of our admin team if they want to jump in and add something to.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And the next thing I have on here is thirty-sixty-ninety-day planning. We have a PTA carnival Friday at the elementary school, January eleventh here, five to six p.m. I don't know if any of the board members will be participating in, but I know I'll be there.
Right, Deb will be there?
So, three of us will be there. We have the State Education Convention coming up, January twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. And parent-teacher conferences coming up in March. Spring play coming up March twenty-second through March twenty-fourth. Is there anything else that anybody else would like to add to that?
There's a winter formal, is that not correct, coming up here shortly in January?
Semi-formal.
Semi-formal, sorry.
January...
Twenty-eighth, is that right?
Right, it's last, be last Saturday.
Last Saturday, yeah, January twenty-eighth.
That was, January twenty-eighth is what?
Winter semi-formal?
Winter semi-formal, okay.
That week is...
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. And the last thing I have on my part of it here is legislative updates. As of today, Governor Tony Evers, this happened a while back, but he was just sworn in today, picked Carolyn Stanford Taylor as the next state superintendent. Carolyn had served as an assistant state superintendent previously. The Senate Education Committee members have been announced. Luther Olson, Chair, Republican. Alberta Darling, Vice Chair, Republican. Steve Nass, Republican. Dale Kuyanga, Republican. Kathleen Bernier, Republican. Chris Larson, Democrat. Janet Buie, Democrat. Latonya Johnson, Democrat. And Patty Schatchner, I think I pronounced that right, Democrat. Then, some of you are aware of the lame duck session that we had here. We had some things that had happened here, and one of them kind of flew under the radar. An extraordinary session passes, bill requiring settlement funds to be deposited into the general fund and not the common school fund. Bill would require the Department of Justice to deposit all settlement funds into the general fund, and further require that all unencumbered settlement funds that are currently in the...
in the DOJ appropriation would lapse into the general fund. On a note, WASB and others had asked lawmakers to remove this language based on the view that those funds are constitutionally required to be deposited in the common school fund established by the Wisconsin's original state constitution. So I'm thinking we might hear some more on that one. That's all I have for legislative updates.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is review of the meeting, reflection of committee of the whole meeting. Anybody have anything to reflect upon?
Can I reflect one question?
Well, this, if it's about the reflection of the meeting, you may come to the, to the microphone. If it's not, then I have to cut you off because the, the deal is, is that when we have an item for discussion, then at that point you can raise your hand and, and ask a question.
I was tardy, I was having supper and I was watching you and I said, I should be there.
Okay, well, this is Joe.
It's an informal question, either for the board now or later. That's what my question is, regards land.
Well, we've already done that. So we've already discussed that area in, in the, in the meeting. So at this point, no.
Okay.
I'll have to have you sit down, but thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate that. All right. Thank you.
You could share it with email though, to the board members.
Maybe you can relay that question on to me and I'll make sure that it gets disseminated.
Okay. Waiting for word.
That'll be perfect. All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Joe, for understanding. All right, so any other reflection of tonight's meeting? Deb?
Yeah, I just want to say, as far as I'm concerned, the way these, the way the structure's coming on these meetings is very informative and it's very engaging and I think that it gives us an opportunity to ask questions that we need to ask. And if there's other things that we need to ask of the administrators or the staff between the actual board meeting and the time we have these committee meetings, it gives us that opportunity to contact them directly and also get other questions answered if there's more stuff that we need to know. Just to make a, a good informed decision.
Very good. Anything else? I apologize for not having read that statement about audience members and you might have been on your way here, Joe, when I was reading that, that part of the explanation, but we'll take care of your situation.
We should note for the friends at home, it is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, yes.
That is mentioned on the agenda, so we didn't catch you off guard though.
Correct. It wasn't a surprise. Anything else? All right, so at this point, go ahead, Robert.
I was wondering if we, at some point, we're going to vote whether to continue this style of management or not. Are we going to ever ask the public what they think of this or is it just going to be a decision that we make? I mean, how do we, what is your thinking on that before we have to make a decision in April, I think, whether we're going to continue to do this style or not?
April or May?
Well, we, we, the proposal was to do it for six months and it would bring us through April. And then, and then the reason we did that is because I didn't, I specifically knew that we were going into an election. I didn't want it to become an election issue. And I also felt that the new board coming in should be able to make the decision whether or not they want to go along with it also. So that's why I said April and we did it. So the decision would be probably at the May meeting after the new board is sworn in, whether they want to continue to do that or not.
Well, I, I know that the board does have to make the final decision, but are we going to seek any opinion from the public as to whether they like it better this way or not? Whether it's working for them or not, or, and so that we have some guidance as to whether we want to do it or not?
Would the, the, the people from our community, from our school district always have an opportunity to come and speak at the second meeting of the month with community comments. And so if they would like to make that known to us, they can certainly do that. Or, or they have email also that, that they could let the administration know how they like it?
Right, I understand that they always have the option to do that, but I was just wondering, since you brought it up for discussion, that's a question that came to my mind. We've never sought out what they're thinking or whether we're just assuming, because nobody has said anything, that they like it.
Well, let me tell you about this. I like, I'm doing a review of the meeting and I like it. I like starting at 5:00 for the first meeting. I like to be typically getting done by 6:30 of the second meeting. I like starting at 6:00 in the wintertime and even in the summertime. I think it will be a wonderful time to start. I have not heard any complaints about the starting time and/or the ending time. And I'm speaking as the board president, but I'm also speaking as a citizen. I know that I would not want to be on the, on some of these winter roads any later than I have to be. And so that's my assessment of this committee of the whole.
My, my assessment is that it is going very well. I look at the people that have been attending. I look at the fact that we have, each committee's structure has been addressed in about a 90-minute period so far. There's been good discussion. We've had presentations. We're all sitting here at the same table together. We're going from one committee to the next in the progression of whatever is necessary to be dealt with. And we're not sitting for a half hour, 45 minutes at a time, waiting till our next meeting where to begin. I think it's important that all the board members are here at one time that we, so when we have these discussions, everybody's involved with it. Sometimes we sit here and learn and sometimes we participate, but either way, we are here and we know what's going on. I think that's very important to the board, to know that all of us are here at the same time, hearing the same information.
And the fact that it was recorded tonight and the other times, Erin will get a chance to hear us and, and hear the same things that we had tonight. And I think that's an important opportunity for any board member that would need to miss any of our meetings.
The other thought is that, I didn't even, you hit on is the fact that this is being recorded and our committee meetings were never being recorded. The people at home didn't get a chance to see. I don't know what the numbers are for each meeting, but the opportunity is there to see every single committee, every time this board meets is now being recorded or before it was not.
That's one thing I was going to mention too, that never had the opportunity for the community to watch the meetings afterwards. When we had committee meetings, you had to be there before the meeting. Now you no longer have to do that. But if you choose to come, you can participate too. So that's an advantage also. I would hope that they're happy with it because I am.
There you go. So we've had a few reflections here tonight. Anybody in the crowd want to have a reflection except for Joe on his topic? Sorry, Joe, I'm picking on the man. All right, I, I see none, thank you. Robert, anything else?
No.
All right, very good, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent one, parent C, to consider the employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. We are going to do two things. We're going to discuss employee fitness for duty and consider, consider the request for administrator tuition reimbursement. We will need a roll call vote to do that. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. How about Deb, would you like to make that motion?
I will make that motion to go into closed session.
And Nathaniel, would you like to second it?
Second.
All right, there we go. We've had a motion and a second to do that. And now the roll call vote.
Aaron Birch? Deb Olson?
Yes.
Dana Nelson?
Yes.
Robert Holland?
Yes.
Karen Sworitzin?
Yes.
Kevin King?
Yes.
Paul Johnson?
Yes.
We are in closed session.